All right. So, welcome to the 2022-2023 Proposed Budget Town Hall Meeting. Over the past year, we have been encouraged to reinvent the way that we inform and engage the citizens of Capel. Starting this year, we wanted to incorporate a knowledge-sharing portion of the "Did You Know?" of how town hall, of the Town Hall Meeting to help inform the citizens on different areas of municipal government. As part of the 2040 Strategic Plan, the Town Hall Meeting encompasses Pillar One, which is to perpetuate a learning environment. Council's goal this year is to promote a knowledge-sharing environment. So, why is this important? Because knowledge is important. And with the citizen-led 2040 Vision, the citizens recognize that sharing the knowledge of the city's decisions builds collective understanding. Each year, we'll contain a new topic with the hopes that this creates a measurable impact for you, the citizens. We encourage you to reach out on topics that would help you create the bond of knowledge between us, the city, and you, the citizens. After our portion of knowledge-sharing, we will go over the budget process, the financial documents, the police request, the fire request, public works request, the utility operations request, which is part of the Public Works Department, the drainage utility district request, the capital improvement projects, park and recreation request, and the Capel Recreation Development Corporation request. At the end, we will have a portion for you to answer any questions that you might have. To start the night off, we want to extend the knowledge of the purpose of the City of Capel. The purpose of the City of Capel is to provide for the health, safety, and quality of life for citizens. And in doing so, provide a foundation for building a better community. Our departments, like the Parks and Recreation Department, provide a quality of life and health to the community through classes, enrichment activities, the Core, Senior Center, Biodiversity Center, Art Center, Library, Tennis Center, the Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery, programs, farmer's market, and so much more. The Parks Department provides 88 programs, 14 special events each year, and the library brings in almost 600 daily visitors. And we have 17 parks for all of our residents and our visitors. Our Public Works Department prides itself on safety, quality of life, and accessibility, and the upkeep of the city streets, buildings, traffic, as well as creating a safe place for ADA citizens. They take care of the facilities, the roads, the accessibility for the residents, our water maintenance, our streetlights, traffic lights, and more. This year, they will complete five public projects, take care of 34 structures, complete 6,000 square feet of sidewalk repair, and take care of 679 traffic signal heads. They also take care of almost a million linear feet of water main and almost a million linear feet of sanitary sewer lines for the citizens of Capel. Our Public Safety Department's responsibility is to serve the public by preserving and protecting their life and maintaining a safe and peaceful community, which follows our purpose of safety and quality of life. They take care of 18,000 911 calls a year, provide 65 child classes at the Life Safety Park, 15 adult classes at the Life Safety Park, and they also prepare possible emergencies with our outdoor warning systems. So, with all of this, how do we accomplish this purpose? How do we bring a quality of life, health, and safety to our citizens? Through the support of the community, through your volunteering and you being a citizen who is engaged with the city, also through the support of the city council, who directs and makes the best decisions to create the best outcome for our city. But we also cannot do it without funding. That includes a percentage of the property tax, a percentage of the sales tax from the citizens, as well as visitors who come to play and come to eat and come to just shop, and for the charges of services provided by the city. And of course, we couldn't do it without our citizens, who continue to learn and grow and develop to provide a foundation for a better community. So now that we know our city's purpose and how we can accomplish this purpose through our city council, through our community support, how do, but we also do it by property taxes. And would that help? How, I mean, how does this affect you as a citizen? How can we, what's the process of it? What's the process of the tax rate? The property tax process first starts out with the tax assessor. It calculates the tax rate, and the City of Capel council members propose the tax rate. The council holds a public hearing on the budget and the tax rate, and the council adopts the tax rate. The last thing is that the tax assessors mail the bills. So with all of that, how do we calculate the tax rate? So we have two sections of the tax rate. The MNO, which is the Maintenance and Operation, and if you looked back in our further slides, that's the quality of life or the health and safety of our community. And then INS portion, which is our interest in sinking, and that's the debt that we incur on the bonds and/or the fire stations that we purchase or any other large projects. So how is the property bill broken down? It's broken down into a variety of distributions. We have the school district, which we are not, and we are not the county. And that is also broken down into four sections, which is our hospital district, county, college district, and our school equalization. The city only sees 20% of the citizens' property taxes. The remaining 80% go to the school district and the county, which are the four other distributions, the hospital, college, and school equalization. So now that we know a little bit more about the city purpose and the property taxes and the tax rates, we will continue to dive into the upcoming fiscal '23 budget process and the current and proposed projects. So the five-year forecast was presented to council at the work session on March 22nd of this year. It was then uploaded to our city website on April the 4th. As we prepare for next year's budget, the Town Hall Meeting formally kicks off this budget process. Notable dates for the budget and any actions that we have between the citizens and the budget are any of the council meetings going further and the budget workshops, which are June 16th, June 21st, June 23rd, and July 28th of this year. Dates bound by legislature or our city charter are our budget filing deadline per our charter, which is August the 5th, our public hearing for our Crime Control Prevention District, and our tax rate, public hearing and budgets. We also, on that same day, have the expected budget and tax rate adoption. And then our fiscal year starts on 10/1 of 2022. We have other resources available on our Transparency and Finance Department website. You can find our annual operating budget for fiscal year '22. You can also find our budget in brief for fiscal year '22, our five-year forecast for fiscal years 2022 to 2026, and our annual financial report for fiscal year '21. Before we get into the police departments, I want to make sure that you understand that what you're about to see is the approved fiscal year projects or requests and the proposed for fiscal year '23 projects or requests. The proposed or not approved projects, they are in the developmental stage of the budget process. And as we continue down our budget year, this through, you know, consulting with the city council, this will become a leaner list for the fiscal year '23 budget. So if you have any questions or comments about anything that you see tonight, you can let us know through email, which is thebudgetinput@capeltx.gov. And that is going to be on our last slide. With that, I will turn it over to Danny Barton, our Police Chief, to go over our fiscal year '22 approved request and our proposed fiscal year '23 for the Police and Animal Services Department.
All right. Thank you, Tamara. So in fiscal year '21-'22, the Police Department, the, first let me say, Animal Services Department is one of the wings of the Police Department. And last year, we asked for an animal play area, which is outside the shelter where the dogs can get out and get exercise, get out in the outdoor and play around. That area was really starting to become really dated, and we were having drainage issues on that side of the animal services as well. And so that came through last year's adopted budget, and those bids are coming in now, and we should be coming to council shortly with recommendations to move forward on that. For fiscal year '22-'23, the Police Department is kind of part two of the animal play area. We're going to request a few security cameras, additional security cameras at the animal services building. One will be fixed on that play area. We have no cameras on that area, and we don't really have good security cameras on the parking lot. We virtually can't see our animal services trucks with our current placement of cameras. We're also bringing forward a police vigilant automatic license plate reader. It's a refurbish, that might be the wrong word, to refresh. We've had automatic license plate readers at several intersections in the City of Capel since 2015. Some of them are starting to come to end of life, and so we're going to propose that we replace some of the very first cameras that we put out back in 2015. And that is all the requests the Police Department will have for this budget year. And with that, you want me to? I, I, I'll hand it over to Fire Chief Kevin Richardson.
Yes, my name is Kevin Richardson. As our city manager pointed out, it's me and my mustache are serving as the Fire Chief. I'd be happy to cover the topics of discussion this evening. So the Fire Department encompasses fire rescue, EMS, and emergency management. On the emergency medical services side, we do staff, we have four ambulances in our fleet. They were scheduled for replacement this last year, which was adopted. We have since placed that order, and I'm glad we did. There is a supply chain issue as well as labor and chassis and everything else. Our original estimation was it was going to be an 18-month lead time. We have since been told it's up to 24 months. So with that being said, by the time these ambulances get here and in place, it'll be eight-plus years on the current fleet. So we're excited to get this project moving. The proposed issues that I'd like to mention tonight, the first one is for life pact maintenance agreement. Again, this is part of the Emergency Medical Services Division. We have, these are cardiac monitors. We provide advanced life support, and we have 11 units throughout our fleet, so just not the ambulances provide advanced life support. But these cardiac monitors are on every piece of Fire Department equipment. They're very high-tech pieces of equipment that require certification and calibration and maintenance throughout the year. Our maintenance agreement will expire at the end of this year, and so we'll look to renew that with a four-year agreement. The next item is fire rescue equipment. On the fire rescue side, we are the technical rescue experts for the region. That's what we provide. This would be things like trench rescue, high-angle structural collapse, vehicle extrication, things of that nature. And so this was to refresh and replace some of the equipment that we have on our apparatus to maintain our programs. The next item talks is ballistic vest replacements. So there is a lifespan on our ballistic vest and protection program for our paramedics. Our paramedics are part of a tactical paramedic program that function as part of our active threat, along with the Police Department and law enforcement. This personal protective equipment has a lifespan, and the equipment that we have, both helmets and the ballistic vests, will be expiring this year. So we will need to replace that as well. The radio replacements, the Emergency Management Division that falls within the Fire Department handles oversight and management of the entire radio system for the city. That would include police, fire, public works, as well as parks. And so it's a huge project that requires constant attention, and each year, we have scheduled some radios that would need to be replaced, usually after 10 years of service. The next item has to do, again, with our Emergency Management Division that's managing our radio service. This particular item, in the City of Capel, we have a lot of very dense structures, lots of concrete in these warehouses, and they're filled with a lot of product, and that's challenging for radio transmissions. What this does is this equipment will allow us to test and monitor areas that we're having communications challenges inside these buildings, and that way we can implement corrections. It's a huge safety issue that we have to monitor. Again, as part of our Emergency Management Division, our Emergency Operations Center at Life Safety Park, it's a dual-function facility. The AV system there is due for an enhance and a refresh. It'll be seven-plus, almost nearly eight-years-old, and there's some technology upgrades that we need to do. The facility's used quite often, almost every day, just internally throughout the city, plus some outside agencies. So we definitely need to enhance and refresh our AV system there. Along that same note, again, Life Safety Park is aging. It's been in play almost seven years now, and by the time this goes through, we have furniture, some chairs and table replacements that are broken that will need to be replaced so that we can maintain the use of the facility. The next proposed project has to do with the relocation of Fire Station Number One. So back in 2016, we underwent a very thorough and detailed standards of cover, which evaluates our city's response model. And at the end of that long, tedious process, it was determined that we had outgrown our existing response model. Our elected officials at the time gave us instruction to move forward with the best total solution, which was to add Fire Station Four, which we did. The second part of that was to relocate Fire Station Number One, which, right about that time, COVID hit, so the project has been on hold. We're in the process of refreshing all of the data and the metrics and be preparing a presentation to be made here in the next several months to get direction on the project. All right. With that being said, I'll introduce Kent Collins, our Director of Engineering and Public Works.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening. My name is Kent Collins. I'm Director of Public Works here in Capel Public Works. We're responsible for everything infrastructure, plus facilities, plus fleet. So it's engineering, GIS, it's water and sewer maintenance, water quality, traffic maintenance, street maintenance, facilities maintenance, and fleet maintenance. So we've got a lot of areas that we cover, things that need to be maintained, replaced, refreshed. On the operations side, we say if you don't notice us, we're doing our job. But on the maintenance side and the replacement side, we know that that can be disruptive. So I'm going to go through some projects and equipment that we have approved for funding this fiscal year, as well as some proposed for next fiscal year. Beginning with fleet replace of portable lifts, these are lifts for heavy trucks or heavy equipment, such as fire trucks and ambulances. And we're actually in the process of procuring those lifts. We had a mid-sized concrete saw for our street crew that they need to do the jobs that they do to replace panels and sidewalks, traffic upgrade, signal communications. We have this project in there on an annual basis, and it's really to continue to extend and enhance our fiber optic network that we use to connect all of our traffic signals. In the fiscal year '22-'23, we have proposed to replace our existing engineering GPS and surveying equipment. I just looked at it before I came over here, and our current equipment was manufactured in 2010. So by the time we actually get to replace this, it'll probably be 13, maybe going on 14-years-old. Needs to be replaced. We use this when we do any kind of in-house design or need to just take shots for, to understand what's happening with drainage, things like that. This is the equipment that we need to do that. Next is to replace and upgrade the fuel dispensers and pumps at the service center. For those that don't know, we have our own fueling tank and fueling station at the service center. I think the equipment that we have out there, I'm not sure when it was installed, but it's kind of Mayberry-era equipment, needs to be replaced to make sure that it's doing the job that we need it to, that folks can get fuel when they need it, and that we're tracking it properly. Let's see, this fiscal year, in our Utility Operations Group, we have a six-inch pump and a pipe ranger that they need to do their operations. We have DeForest lift station repairs, and that's really some site repairs. We actually have in our five-year plan to do a full rehab of the DeForest lift station. So these are kind of some preliminary site repairs. And then valve replacement at Village Parkway. Part of our ongoing maintenance of our water system, we identify and replace valves, and this is basically just going in and rebuilding and replacing one of the valves at Village Parkway. For the upcoming fiscal year, we have in to replace two vehicles. One's a three-quarter-ton truck, and the other is a service vehicle. And again, any of the vehicles that you'll see that we're planning to replace, our fleet team goes through and evaluates, and basically, we extend the life of a vehicle to the point where it's taking us more money and more funding to keep it on the road than it is to replace it. And so that's where these vehicles are in their life. In our Drainage Utility District, in the current fiscal year, we have a creek-level monitoring equipment that was funded. We are actually planning on implementing that. We have a grade control structure project up on Denton Creek, and our plan is to implement this creek-level monitoring equipment in conjunction with that project. We've been held up due to utility conflict, but also working with the Corps on their releases from Grapevine Lake. And then we also have Arborbrook Channel drainage design, which we're in the process of getting that scoped and awarded. And that is, it's a, if you've ever seen it, it's a kind of a narrow drainage channel behind houses or between yards off of Arborbrook. And what happens over time in these, when they're kind of in that environment, people just encroach in it over time. So we really need to go in and reestablish that channel, and that's what that project is to do. 2020, 2023 fiscal year, aerial photography project, it's, so we used to buy aerial photographs once a year. We've actually gone to a system that is available, it's kind of a software as a service or a photography as a service now, so it's accessible anywhere, and they fly it multiple times a year. So we feel like it's a better service than what we've, we had in the past. This, and then the next project is the construction of the Arborbrook Channel drainage, drainage channel. Flip those. And then every year, we have to, channel mowing seems kind of like a weird thing, but we have some dry channels, and if we don't mow them, they will grow cattails and other anaerobic material that we don't want in there because they, well, mainly because it impacts the flow of water, and we want to make sure those channels stay clear of that type of vegetation. Creek cleaning, we have annual contracts to clean creeks, again, to maintain the conveyance in the creeks and streams. St. Joseph Channel Bank stabilization, this is a channel actually runs parallel to Sandy Lake Road. If you got out of your car over near St. Joseph and looked in that channel, you would notice that some of the banks have begun to fail, and we've been monitoring that for a while. We're, it's at a point where we really need to go in and address it before it impacts Sandy Lake Road. Continued storm drain condition assessment, this is part of our stormwater plan and program that we're required to do, to just go in and assess the condition of mainly all of our outfalls and intake structures in our storm drains. Then the next one is to perform any repairs that we need to do on our storm drain system. We have an annual street sweeping program and contract. And then in this next fiscal year, in our Drainage Utility District funding plan, we had identified and are requesting a stormwater specialist, and this person would be responsible for managing that stormwater program, that drainage program. And then we have a vehicle for that position as well. Continuing on, current fiscal year, we had, so typically, you would see maybe one or two street reconstruction projects in neighborhoods. We understand that there's some construction fatigue with everything that's going on around the city. So in this fiscal year, we proposed and are funded to use some of our quarter cent IMF money to do some major repairs on a number of streets that really don't need to be reconstructed, but they need a lot of panel replacement, concrete work. The first is Dividend down in our Business District, and then Mockingbird, and off of that is Falcon, it's not listed here. And then we're going to do a partial kind of level up of Royal. And what you'll see is that we've got Royal to reconstruct next fiscal year, and this repair is just a, it's kind of a stopgap just to get us through until we can do the reconstruction of Royal. Stream G6 Erosion Control Project, it's a tributary of Grapevine Creek, and that project is actually completed now. And again, it went through kind of a natural channel, ran through a neighborhood, a lot of interaction with residents on that project, and it was to stabilize the flow of the channel as well as protect a sanitary sewer that was located in the bottom of that channel that had been exposed due to erosion. Everybody's favorite project, Beltline Road Reconstruction. I have to say, don't drive on Beltline if you don't have to. It's a, it's a big project, and right as of now, we're on schedule to be complete within the contract time limit. It's a full reconstruction of South Beltline from Southwestern down to LBJ, and yeah, so far, so good. Traffic's flipped, and they're working on utilities now. Plantation Drive in Mossy Oak, it's a neighborhood, street replacement project. These are high-impact projects, I will tell you. They're, you know, if you've lived through one of these, you know, our contractors and our, this work is in your front yard, literally. And so they are high-impact. This one in particular is really long for a neighborhood street. I call it a neighborhood collector, and we're, it's a full replacement of utilities, drainage, paving, sidewalks, restoration of the yards and the landscaping. The good news is, we're about four to six weeks for being finished with this project, so the end is in sight. We do annual ADA improvements. We have an ADA transition plan, which identified really all of our ADA or accessibility deficiencies around the city, whether facilities that we maintain or in parks or along our streets. So whenever we do a project, a capital project, if we touch a street, we address any of those deficiencies as part of that project. We also work on that list as part of our annual funding. So as an example, this year, we award a streets, alleys, and sidewalks. So as an example, this year, we, we award a, a streets, alleys, and sidewalks contract on an annual basis. And the sidewalk really includes the ADA part as well. So we're working on that, those ADA improvements on an annual basis. This year, the alley, the neighborhood alley project is really just maintenance as part of that contract that I mentioned. Due to the quarter-cent, due to the reduction in sales tax collections, we've had to scale back what we budget for, for things like alley replacements and neighborhood street replacements. Used to, we would budget a neighborhood alley replacement project on an annual basis. And now we have spaced those out to every four or five years. So if you look at our plan, you know, it's, usually it's a million-dollar project to do alley replacements. And with that million, usually we can get two or three alleys replaced. If you look at our plan now, you'll only see that million dollars every four or five years. So we've really had to scale back the pace of, of those alley replacement projects. So for 2223, proposed projects, as I mentioned, complete reconstruction of Royal. That's bond, identified as a bond-funded project. And it is from, it's the full length from Sandy Lake down to 635. If you're familiar with what we did on Freeport Parkway, that kind of project. So every four or five years, we go out and, and reassess the condition of every street and sidewalk and alley in Capella. And this Fugro pavement condition study is that study. And again, we, we do that every, every few years. I already mentioned ADA improvements. It's the same program that we're doing this year. We'll propose it for next year. The next one is, is another bond identified as a bond-funded project. This is improvements down at the service center that houses the operations teams and divisions for both public works and parks and recreation. We'll be having some conversations about what that might look like. Basically, the, the service center, the building itself that houses all the staff hasn't been improved since that service center was built originally. And it, it needs improvements for some of the operations that we do down there. And then the last one is just our street, alley, and sidewalk, our annual repair and, and maintenance contract. And with that, I will hand it over to Jessica, who is our Parks and Recreation Director.
All right, good evening. I'm Jessica Carpenter, Director of Parks and Recreation. And as Tamara mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Department really provides the quality of life services in town. So we're responsible for the Core, the Tennis and Pickleball Center, the Senior Center, the Art Center, the Biodiversity Education Center, Rolling Oaks Memorial Center, the Library, camps, adult athletics, special events, 17 parks, as well as medians, right-ofways, athletic fields, and lots of programs tied to all of those different things. So quite a bit of things of value that we feel that we add to the community. So just getting into our fiscal year 2122, current requests. First up is our annual fitness replacement over at the Core. So for those of you that work out at the Core there, every year, we try to keep in our budget a replacement of either fitness equipment, either cardio or weight machine replacement. Those are heavily, heavily used. We actually monitor the cardio equipment, treadmills, and ellipticals based on the mileage. It's kind of like a car. So once they reach certain mileage, they reach end of life, and it's time to go ahead and replace those machines. So we're working on that currently. 2223 proposed request here in our general fund is our Parks Master Plan. And so the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is really similar to the city's overall 2040 comprehensive plan. It's sort of a strategic and comprehensive plan specifically for the park system. It's really drives everything we do. We do, we undergo a master plan process every five to seven years. And the last time that process was undergone was 2016, and then council adopted that in 2017. So we're really coming up on end of life of our master plan process, and we're really ready to engage with what the future of the park system will become. After that is our, we do have one park operations Trimax mower, so it's just a mower replacement. So we can maintain all of those 17 parks, medians, and right-ofways. Our current year request out of the Capella Recreation Development Corporation, this is that half-cent sales tax fund. So all four of these projects are actually currently underway. We're currently in design on renovations to the Duck Pond Park. So the Duck Pond Park is the oldest park in Capella, originally built in the 70s. And really, we haven't done a whole lot since then. So it's a heavily-used park by young families in town. And it's time for us to address some erosion in that park, specifically on the south side of park, doing some stonework, as well as addressing some playground resurfacing there. So like I said, we're currently in design there, and that'll be about for the next six months. Over at Fleet Park Pond, we're addressing some erosion there. We're installing a new clay pond liner. That park just, that project just went out for bids. We just opened bids on this last week, so we hope to be going to council to move forward with this process here very soon. The Magnolia Park Trail, so this one's been definitely widely talked about here in this room many, many times. So we're excited to be finally in design on the Magnolia Park Connector Trail. This is a trail that's going to run along the south side of the pond edge in the Magnolia Park HOA. And so we're going to place a trail there and address some erosion on that south side at the same time. And one thing to specifically note about the, the Magnolia Park project is while it was originally identified out of the CRDC, council has opted to use American Rescue Plan or the ARP funds for this project, which is a great use of this funding. We're very excited about this, and that, that relieves some of the, the pressure there off CRDC. So Magnolia Park is identified for ARP funding. And then one project we're very excited about a long time coming in town is the addition of a cricket field. So we're currently in design on the city's first cricket field. It's going to be located at Wagon Wheel Field Six. And if you're not familiar with that, that's the, the field over off North Point Drive, over near the new fire station. So we are going to be installing a cricket pitch there. And then next year's proposed CRDC request, you're going to see a definite shift in requests from the, from the current year. The current year is still about building new, and you can definitely see a shift here into next year into taking care of what we have. We're really shifting into a maintenance and replacement mode in 2223. So the first four items are going to be, actually, the first several items are going to be at the Core, but the first four specifically relate to the pools at the Core. So the Core originally opened in 2000. And so for those of you that have residential pools, you know, when you hit that like 22 mark, it's about time to start really, really replacing some things, doing some pump repair, plaster, and things of that nature. So we're going to be spending a little bit of, of money to, to keep those pools looking nice. Those are heavily, heavily used by our community. So we're replacing the plaster on the indoor and outdoor pools, pumps at the outdoor pools, as well as the slide tower. That slide tower itself has never been replaced, and so we'll be looking at going in and doing some metalwork and some new stairs. The weight machine replacement, so this is different than the Core Fitness Replacement, which will replace our cardio machines. This one will actually replace the actual weight, the heavy weight equipment that's on the, that side of that facility. Andy Brown East Erosion and Wall Repair. So we are seeing a little bit of erosion concern on the east side of Andy Brown East, specifically underneath the Performance Pavilion. Nothing extremely serious, but something that we should address here soon. So we'll be needing to spend just a little bit to address that erosion there. We'll be looking, actually, probably replacing altogether our lightning prediction system, upgrading to, to a new type of lightning prediction system. So if you're out in the parks and there's conditions that are favorable, potentially favorable for a lightning strike within a certain mile radius, you'll hear three-horn blast sound, and that's typically your cue to get out of the park. So it's important for us to maintain those, to keep our parkgoers safe in the event of a lightning strike. So we'll be updating that system. The Andy Brown West Bridgewood Decking. This is a, just a small pedestrian wood bridge on the north side of the Andy Brown West Trails. We'll be just replacing the wood slating of that bridge. And then finally, our Allen Road Park, another heavily-used park in town. We'll be upgrading that playground surface to some engineered wood fiber. So it's a similar surface to many of our other playgrounds in town. Andy Brown West, Kid Country, those, those parks all use the engineered wood fiber. So that's the surface that we'll be going with. And with that, I believe I may be passing it back to Tamara for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any questions from anybody? Comments for any of our directors? Yes, sir.
Area general question. How was this being advertised to the citizens? Because I'm extremely disappointed that showing was published here for a town meeting.
Sure, we did some digital marketing. We also put it in the paper, both of the papers for Capella. And then we also did some online advertising. Our websites, any of our platforms that we have. Any, anytime that we do any of our marketing, it goes out to all of our platforms. And our town hall meeting did the same.
Well, that's fine, but to be honest with you, I don't think anybody's looking at your platform very much. Because obviously, we had a meeting the other day at the seniors' stand. Showing there was much better, but we're still disappointing a lot of people that were interested. And we're saying, well, we never saw anything actually come out of this. And I said, well, you're supposed to go on the website. Nobody seems to know that. So I mean, I think, and these papers that are out of Capella, and there's maybe three newsstands that I know about, you gotta buy them, and nobody buys them. I'm gonna take that mine here when I come to the council meeting. So it's not a good venue. You need to find something that can get the message out to people that's more effective, like put signs in major supermarkets or something like that. But, you know, because I think you need more response. This is a very good informal meeting, for me anyways. So I think you're, you're suffering from lack of the general population. You can be aware of what's going on.
Thank you for your comment. We'll let our communication specialists know that. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for coming out, and thank you, directors, for explaining all your projects. The next public hearing, anything that you want to learn about the CCPD, which is our Crime Control Prevention, will be in May. And then all of our budget workshops will be in June and July. So we hope to see you there. If you have any comments or questions, you can email us at thebudgetinput@capelltx.gov, or you can come up here and talk to us directly.
Thanks, Tamara.
Thanks.